7:30.
I call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on January 11, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference. Which meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city website calendar. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering and Alderwoman at Large, Hoshana Kelly will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us all, God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you're participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting which is required under the right to know law. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Present on Zoom because I tested positive for COVID. I'm alone in the room.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Present.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am participating via Zoom. I am home alone due to an abundance of caution for the pandemic, and I am by myself.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I am attending on Zoom because an immediate family member has tested positive for COVID, and I am alone.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Kathy.
Present via Zoom because I am adhering to COVID protocols. I am alone in the room.
Thank you. Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I'm here.
You have 11 physically in attendance and four participating via Zoom.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. I'd like to have John Cathy sworn in. So, John, I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Bolton so you can be sworn in.
Mr. Cathy, Alderman-elect Cathy, would you stand and raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as an Alderman of the City of Nashville according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire? So help you God.
Please mute it.
I do.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Alderman Cathy. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Well, first again, I wanted to discuss the COVID-19 situation. As you probably have heard, the number of cases and the overall transmission within the community is up considerably. The two measures we've been talking about over these last two years principally in terms of gauging transmission are the positivity rate and the number of new cases per 100,000 people over the last 14 days. Positivity rate, as of days ago, was 28.4 percent, nearly double what I reported to you two weeks ago. The number of new cases for per 100,000 is over 1,800. That was 1,200 and something two weeks ago. And of course, during the summer months, that was way down, like 70, 50. We have about 58 people in the hospital as of yesterday between the two hospitals. Hospitals are definitely stressed. They called on the city to see if we could provide employees and help, and we've worked with the fire department and the police department to provide officers on detail if and when they're necessary. But the hospitals have gotten some good news in the sense that they're now their National Guard at St. Joe's. National Guard is expected at Southern, and FEMA is going to be helping out as well. So they think that they're in better shape than they thought when we talked last week, and therefore, they may or may not need fire and police officers who would be hired on a detailed basis, same terms as normal details. Now, the good news, if there is any, is that the hospitals were particularly concerned about the projections coming from the University of Washington, which has been pretty accurate and has been providing projections throughout the last two years. They have projected that February is going to be a very difficult month, or next month or so here is going to be very difficult. The peak may occur in the first couple of weeks of February, but that same group in the University of Washington is projecting a very steep decline come April and May in terms of especially the number of people who will be fatally struck with the virus. We have suffered, Nashua tragically, the loss of five more people over the last couple of weeks, so we now have about 120 people who have passed away here in our community. But I think we can at least take some hope in the idea that we may see a steep decline in early spring. Again, Public Health doing vaccinations, doing that will soon be putting out home testing, home tests, and again, is very dedicated and doing a great job. Now, on more mundane business, I want to mention that from time to time, I'll be reporting to you regarding the status of bills in the legislature. These do affect us. We principally are watching, we're watching a lot of things, but we principally watch bills where the state hits us with reduced revenue or increased expenses. Last year, the state increased the city's pension bill over and above any increase in wages by $4 million, resulting in about a 2% tax increase just for that. And this year, the amount of school aid is projected to be down over $2 million, hitting the tax, the hardworking taxpayers of Nashville with another 1% tax increase there. So we are watching all those bills, any bills that would impact our financial position. And I want to mention House Bill 1432, in which it is proposed that the state never spend even 10 cents on commuter rail. We can talk about commuter rail in more detail, but the business community here is solidly behind it, population very much behind it. Now, we have some traction both at the state level through the DOT, doing the final planning phases of the Capitol Corridor project, as well as some attention from Washington. So we'll be learning more in the coming weeks on that. I did have a rather interesting meeting with Chief Rourke of the Police Department. He is doing, looking at some very interesting things. First of all, we're talking about, for the first time, providing hybrid cruisers, which they believe perform pretty well, and it will cost a little more, but will save seven miles again, will increase the mileage by seven miles per gallon. And over a course of, you know, a year at the Police Department, that will make a big difference. And the body cameras, which have been new this year, seem to be functioning pretty well. In some instances, have actually reduced the level of confrontation. People, some of the people that the Police Department is dealing with are a little more calm when they realize that they are on camera. There have been a few technical issues with them, which they're trying to work out with the company. So that, so we may have some interesting things coming there. And finally, Madam President, I wanted to inform the board about a project being undertaken by Dante Castellano and some other students at Nashua South. They are, again, for the second year, providing free trees, or, excuse me, $5 per tree, and they're working with an organization called Tree, T-R-E-E, Plenish, Tree Plenish, to plant, they hope, 275 trees at a cost to the homeowner of $5 per tree. Now, these are, you know, small trees, small saplings, but at a very limited cost, and the students will be able to at least plant some of them. This year, the three species are a form of dogwood, a northern red oak, and a common apple, which is probably a crab apple. So thank you, Dante. And if anyone out there would like a tree, we can, we're in contact with Dante, so you can contact the mayor's office or Dante directly, maybe at the school, but probably the mayor's office is the best, and we will get any kind of messages through to him. And you can also sign up through the Tree Plenish website. So that's all I have, Madam President. And before I conclude, I want to welcome again, we had the inauguration on Sunday, but I want to welcome again our new members, and we look forward to a very productive two years.
Thank you, Mayor. Responses to the remarks of the mayor. I'll sit over on this side. On this side? Okay, seeing none, recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of December 14th and December 21st, 2021 be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches and John L. Griffin, Chief Financial Officer, Treasurer, Tax Collector, regarding comptroller appointment.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Okay. Yes. Laura Calhoun.
Laura Calhoun from 30 Greenwood Drive. I'm speaking against ordinance 22002, which calls for allowing Alderman participation in meetings through video teleconferencing.
Ms. Calhoun, we're not acting on that this evening. We're not acting on it.
It's on the agenda.
We're not acting on it. It's going to be sent to a committee where they will act on it.
When is it going to be acted on?
When it goes to...
It's on the agenda.
Ms. Calhoun, it has to go to a committee before it would be acted on by the board.
Well, if it's on the agenda, I'm allowed to talk about it.
No, we're not taking action on it.
I'm not asking you to take action, but I want you to know how I feel.
Well, you can do that at the next meeting when this is taken up. Anyone else that wishes to give public comment?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Ms. Ordolano.
Are there any items that allow public comment to happen because there is nothing being acted on, is there?
No, there isn't. That's true.
So I don't know why we put it in.
Yeah.
I'm just backing to see if I'm missing something. Thank you. I'll lower my hand.
Thank you. Seeing no one else. Communications requiring final approval?
There is none.
Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
None.
Reports of committees? There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the December 15, 2021 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of Board of Aldermen and Mayor's appointments?
There is none.
Unfinished business? Resolutions?
None.
Unfinished business ordinances?
There is none.
New business resolutions?
First reading of resolution R. 22001, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Board of Education and the Nashville Association of School Administrators and Supervisors, American Federation of School Administrators, AFL-CIO, from July 1 of 2021 through June 30 of 2024 and related transfers.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Cle, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of resolution R. 22002, authorizing the expenditure of $1,810 from the Conservation Fund.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Cle, Alderman Como, Alderman Govea. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of resolution R. 22003, relative to the acceptance of up to $150,000 from the National Endowment for the Arts, American Rescue Plan, ARP, funds into economic development grant activity, grants to local arts agencies.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Moran, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee. New business ordinances?
First reading of ordinance 022001, dissolving the substandard living conditions, Aldermanic Special Committee.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Como, Alderman Govea, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Alderman Dowd. Okay. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of ordinance 022002, allowing Alderman participating in meetings through video teleconferencing to be the presiding officer and conduct the meeting.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. This will be the shortest meeting I think we will ever have.
Don't jinx it.
Okay. Period for general public comment. Ms. Ordolano.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Lori Ordolano. I live at 41 Berkeley Street. I want to start my stopwatch. Okay. I finished a right-to-know lawsuit regarding Nashua's assessing records in December in Superior Court. One of the challenges involved the records returned by the contracted appraisal company responsible for creating the 2018 assessments. The contract signed by the city and the company, the contract signed by the city and the company is a boilerplate document developed by the DRA and widely used by municipalities around the state. The contract calls for all documents and property record cards used to create the new values be returned to the city when the contract ends. I filed a right-to-know to inspect these documents and was denied by the city under 91A exemption for draft material and confidential information. I contacted many chiefs throughout the state, the DRA, and attended assessing standard boards meeting in Concord. I questioned everyone on the confidentiality and draft nature of the information. Not one person backed Nashua's decision to make those records exempt from public disclosure. I wrote back to the city three times, presenting a new argument each time on the importance of these materials being public. These records provided an audit trail for the work done by the hired company and allowed a property owner to verify that Nashua created equity in these new assessments. After three months of denials, I added this to my lawsuit. I then wrote formal right-to-know request to four towns to request to inspect the records returned by their hired appraisal companies. Unlike Nashua, my requests were answered in a matter of hours. One request was the town of Moltenboro, where I own a home. Chief Hughes, who serves, who had served as the director for the DRA, invited me up to inspect these records, expounding that they are your records. Chief Micho from Hudson granted written access to the record, and the Wolfboro assessing clerk also welcomed me up to inspect the records. I finally contacted the assessor in Littleton, New Hampshire. Why did I pick Littleton? Because the Littleton Assessing Office is contracted to KRT, the same company we hired to do our 2018 assessment. The contract language for the return data was identical, and KRT did the same type of 2018 update as was done in Nashua. When I called the Littleton Assessing Chief Dorsett from KRT, I wondered how far my reputation reached. Mr. Dorsett immediately stated that these records, if we still have them available, are public records and affirmed his remarks in writing. Why did Nashua deny?
30 seconds.
When Ms. Kleiner was placed as acting chief of the assessing office, I objected strongly. She did not have the skill set to be qualified for such a technical position. Ms. Kleiner assured the board that she would consult with chiefs around the state to verify that her work was compliant. In December, under cross-examination in court, Ms. Kleiner stated that she never spoke with any other state experts about the public nature of these records. Had I lived in any other place in New Hampshire, I would have had access to these records.
Your time is up.
Deliberately acted to shut down, I'm on one sentence, deliberately acted to shut down the audit trail that allowed me to verify my property assessment and defend it in court as well as KRT's work. The matter is now in the hands of a judge and should not be. This was a needless costly legal challenge.
Okay, your time is up, Ms. Ordolano.
... retaliation. Okay, I overran 15 seconds. Seriously? Nobody's here to talk? Seriously? Ms. Wiltshire, I wish somebody else had picked a new president. 15 seconds.
Anyone else from the public wishes to give comment? Seeing no one? Committee announcements. Alderman Moran, Moran, I'm sorry, I'll get it.
Just announcing that there's no business next week for the Planning and Economic Development Committee, so we'll be canceling that meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none? Oh, yeah. Remarks by members of the board, I guess I missed that. I'll sit on this side. Remarks by anyone? Alderman Tebow.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to everybody that's been helping me over the last couple of months. You know, I've been coming to these meetings, and I think almost everybody that's here, including former Aldermen and Alderwomen, have helped me out, and I think that's great. It's a lot to learn. I take this responsibility of being part of this group serious, and I really thank everybody and look forward to doing great work for the city this year with all of you guys. So thank you.
Anyone else? Going twice. Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment relative to something that the mayor had mentioned and just bring it to the public's attention. In order to support the hospitals, one thing that you can do is contact the United Way. They are looking for volunteer support in non-critical areas such as door beaters. So there are some things that you can do. The United Way is organizing one such effort. I would just urge the public to be considerate of their healthcare workers who are likely doing triple and quadruple times the normal amount of work that they were trained to do, and be sensitive to the, what they're seeing every day. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to welcome all the new board members and looking forward to working with you in the next two years. And I actually, Alderman Lopez stole my thunder. I did want to mention also the United Way. And to add to what he, what he has said is that the United Way, Sarah Caesar is the lead for the volunteers. She is right now looking for citizens who want to help in the area of, I believe it's testing of the employees as they're coming in. You'd be completely safe and so on, but it's handing things out. I know she was looking for some volunteers for every Monday through the month of January. I think it's from 9:00 to 12:30. So anybody who's interested, please contact Sarah Caesar at the United Way on Broad Street. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to thank the mayor for bringing to the attention House Bill 1432. In my time up at the State House, I have been very proactive in commuter rail. One does not have to go far and look at communities, particularly to our southern friends, which has commuter rail in Massachusetts, and look at the thriving communities that exist because they're on the rail corridor. There is nothing wrong with a citizen from Nashua jumping on commuter rail and going to Boston and make the Boston rate okay. Yet come home from that day at work and bring that Boston rate back into our economy. It makes sense. But to my friends up at the State House, it doesn't. We have keno in this city. I'm almost debating whether, you know, they, oh, I don't want to spend a dime for commuter rail, yet when we have keno in this city, that money goes to that local community and supports their education. I'm glad Nashua has broad shoulders. I wish the rest of the state had broader shoulders to help out Nashua. We generate an awful lot of revenue for the state of New Hampshire, and this is another in the beginning of another slap in the face from the New Hampshire House of certain representatives in the New Hampshire House, on us, trying to improve the quality of life in our city. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to say thank you to the people. Last night, we had the orientation meeting, and each department head got up and talked to us about what they did and how it related and the value that they add back to the city. And I just wanted to say thank you because that was a great meeting. It was a great learning experience. Personally, myself, in the run-up to taking office, I did do a ride-along with the Nashville Police Department, so I would urge my fellow Aldermen to do that at some time. I also had the opportunity to walk the wastewater treatment plant, also the solid waste, the landfill as well. So I would really emphasize to my fellow Aldermen, if you have the time to do that, it's well worth it. And then also, I don't know if I'm out of order, but I did have my little hand raised on that side for Bill R. 22003 to support that. So I'm sorry you missed that. I didn't want to interrupt at that point.
Sorry about that.
That's it.
We'll add you as a sponsor as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, just a couple of things. On the 24th, we will have our first budget meeting, and R. 22001 is a contract with school association administrators and supervisors, not the teachers' contract. And we'll be addressing that, and I'd like the members of the Budget Committee to review their contract and have any questions ready. We have 30 days from the day we get the contract to have it sent back approved or disapproved, so it will go to the full Board of Aldermen after a budget meeting on the 24th. The other thing is the Joint Special School Building Committee on the 27th of January is going to be open to the full Board of Aldermen and the full Board of Education. We're going to do an overview of the entire middle school project, including the updated status and a lot of pictures, which would be a lot easier than going out in this weather and looking at the construction going on. So, but it'll give you an overview of just what the entire middle school project is and how far it's come over the last five years and the current status. So you're all invited. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I just quickly wanted to wish everybody a happy new year. I'm glad to be here, and I am certainly happy to be serving with the new folks on the board. I welcome them all. I look forward to working with you. And also, of course, to the folks who have returned, I look forward to continue working with you as well. And again, I wish everybody a happy new year.
Thank you, Alderman Clemmons. So I would just like to thank all the departments that were here last night, gave their time and gave us maybe a little information overload, but, but, yeah, some of it will stick, some of it won't. But, you know, I thought it was really nice that they took the time to do that. So Mayor, thank you to your staff for being available for that. Okay. No need for a non-public session. Alderman O'Brien, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the January 11, 2022 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Kathy.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 A's and 0 N's.
And we are adjourned at 7:59 PM. Thank you, everyone.